Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a meeting of the Southfield City Council, a regular meeting called for August 26, 2013. If you have a cell phone, please turn it on vibrate or off. And Ms. Banks, I'll ask you to call the line.
Thank you. Mr. Fretjaci, Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Lea.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Ms. Seymour.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Seiver.
Here.
You have seven members present this evening.
Thank you very much. All please rise to the platform, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under God, in the heavens and on earth. With every change in the world around. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. We have, we're going to start our meeting today, this evening with a couple of presentations. I'm going to hold off on the first presentation to Harvey and Marion Bronstein as we are waiting for a guest to arrive, and we'll come back to that when that person arrives. So we're going to move on to our second presentation, and that is a joint resolution from the mayor and council to recognize Erica Colson. So Erica, come forward. Can you come up here, young man? Can you get up here if you want?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to turn the mic over to our council president and Ms. Banks. It's with great honor that we honor you tonight, Erica. Not only is she an amazing person, she also is the president and co-founder of Walk the Line to Side Recovery Inc. in Southfield Base Clinic that specializes in spinal cord and traumatic brain injury recovery. I had the good pleasure of meeting her when she was also acknowledged by the county as one of the 2013 Elite Forty Under Forty. She is an amazing person with an amazing story, and you are what the city of Southfield is about. You are a person who has the drive and the vision never to quit and to take any situation and turn it into a positive and be an entrepreneur and a businessperson in our state. So we're very proud of you, Mr. Seiver.
Whereas Erica Colson is the president and co-founder of Walk the Line to Recovery Incorporated, a Southfield Base Clinic that specializes in spinal cord and traumatic brain injury recover, recovery. And whereas in 2001, at the age of 23, Ms. Colson sustained a, I have to do this with my glasses off, a 6'6" 7" spinal cord injury in a car accident which left her paralyzed with the chest down. Since her injury, Ms. Colson has worked tirelessly to find the best therapies for herself and others and bring them back to Michigan. And whereas it's sounding in July, in July of 2007, Walk the Line has increasingly become recognized as a world-leading program for recovery therapy. Ms. Colson, a dedicated team of doctors, physical therapists, and trainers offer innovative, individualized recovery therapy utilizing the newest emerging techniques and research from around the globe. And whereas Ms. Colson was awarded the Oakland County Executive L. Brooks Patterson's prestigious Top 200, 2013 Elite Forty Under Forty Honor, and which, by the way, she was the top honorary to the top of the Class Forty, which recognizes outstanding entrepreneurs. Ms. Colson was chosen by Patterson as well as members of the public who voted for her online and to, due to her well-known passion for helping others and her dedication to the community. Whereas Ms. Colson received support for her nomination from many renowned and influential organizations and citizens of the community, including the Christopher and Dana Reeves Foundation, the American Spinal Injury Association, Brain Injury Association of Michigan, Coalition Protecting Auto No-Fall, and internationally acclaimed author, journalist, and screenwriter and playwright, radio and television broadcaster, Miss Mitch Albom. And whereas hundreds of nominations were submitted online for the Elite Forty Under Forty Class 2013, Ms. Colson receiving, received a majority of the popular vote. Whereas Ms. Colson is also a trustee of Just Sit There Foundation, a final 13C nonprofit organization dedicated to bettering the lives of individuals with spinal cord injuries resulting from violence. Since 2004, Just Don't Sit There Foundation has raised over $250,000 towards access to therapy services as well as placing donated medical equipment with those in need. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate Erica Colson on her many personal and professional achievements, including Oakland County Executive L. Brooks Patterson's 2013 Elite Forty Under Forty. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and council, convey the collective appreciation and commendation to Ms. Colson and all of her staff at Walk the Line of Recovery for their commitment and dedication to helping spinal cord and traumatic brain injury patients achieve full recovery. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for this recognition and a lot of hard work, as many of you know, to own a small business, and we're very happy to be thriving and thriving here in Oakland County. So thank you very much.
Recently, the mayor and councilman Moss and I toured Walk the Line. It really is absolutely amazing what they're doing with people in need of this therapy. We were very, very impressed with the facility, and it's located right here in Southfield, Michigan, on 10 Mile and Berg, and people come from all over the world to this center because of its reputation and the results that it has achieved.
Mr. President, may I ask a little bit of that? Yeah. I first actually got to know Erica's father, Fred Nader, who's in the audience tonight. We held a, when I was working for State Representative Rhi Haas, we held a town hall meeting about the attempts to gut auto no-fault insurance reform here in Michigan. And one of the most powerful voices in that audience at the town hall meeting against that was Erica's father, Fred. And through Fred and through going to the Forty Under Forty presentation earlier this year, I got to meet Erica, as Council President Seiver said, the mayor and council president and I toured the facility here in Southfield. And a lot of people, when they suffer these traumatic injuries, are told, "You'll never walk again." And this, the mission of this small business is to make sure that that's not the case. And we saw people of all ages, of all races, of all circumstances that led them to suffer a traumatic brain injury in that facility, working, working hard to make sure that they were on the road to recovery. And the techniques in Walk the Line are innovative, are unique. There's no place else like that in the world. And as council president said, as far as Saudi Arabia, people are flying to Southfield, Michigan to receive this therapy. And it is such a gem to have here in the city of Southfield. So I just want to congratulate Erica and her family. A well-deserved honor. We're happy to have you making such a difference here in our community.
I just wanted to add that, in addition to all the things you heard, those of you who've been around before you're aware that we took an old schoolhouse and converted it to a office building. They are in the gymnasium of the school, Schoolhouse 10.
Southfield Number 10, yeah.
Yes, school, Southfield Number 10. So it's amazing to see a reuse of a building and being put to such good use. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, don't go away. You're next on the agenda. We have a presentation from SEMCOG, Regional Ambassador Award goes this year to our own Mayor Brenda Lawrence. And sir, if you'll introduce yourself.
I will.
And tell you, tell us what you're up to.
Thank you. I'm Paul Tate, Executive Director of SEMCOG, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. And with me is the leader, the leader of our membership team, Amy Lohmer. My presentation tonight is truly an honor and frankly a personal privilege. I wish to present your own mayor, Brenda Lawrence, of this fine community with SEMCOG's highest honor, the Regional Ambassador Ambassador Award. This is an award given to only a small segment of regional leaders. The co-recipient of this award this year was none other than Senator Carl Levin. So he's in good company with the mayor. As longtime mayor of South, in Southfield, one of the region's larger cities and centers of commerce, Mayor Lawrence is truly an influential regional leader. She has been a strong vocal leader for regional transit, I can attest to that personally, which is now finally moving forward with creation of a regional transit authority. She also knows firsthand the effects that the economic downturn has had on local governments, in particular housing. This past year, Mayor Lawrence chaired SEMCOG's Regional Housing Task Force, recognizing that housing and neighborhoods are the backbones of healthy communities and that a regional approach to the region's housing, housing needs is necessary. The resulting strategy addresses our region's unique challenges, provides a basis for legislative activity, and helps inform our local government assistance aimed at neighborhood resiliency. She has, she has brought much needed attention to the current home appraisal process and the negative impacts that low appraisals have had on property values and neighborhoods. As a result, a subgroup was convened to address both policy and local strategies for the growing appraisal challenge. Mayor Lawrence understands the regional role that SEMCOG plays, and I can count on her to lend her considerable clout and credibility to our regional efforts. I can't thank Mayor Lawrence enough for all of her contributions to Southeast Michigan and to local governments. I can, however, add to the recognition she justly deserves. Join me in congratulating Mayor Brenda Lawrence this year's Regional Ambassador.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you. Are we ready for Mr., for the next presentation?
Unless you have something else you want to do.
Ladies and gentlemen, the audience, I'm honored to receive that recognition. You, we all know that Southfield has tremendous leadership that we provide in so many different capacities, and so many members of our body have been recognized. And it, SEMCOG has played a major role.
You're right here. Go ahead.
No, you come. And so I do appreciate that. We have another leader in our community, who goes next.
Okay.
We have another leader in our community, Harvey Bronstein. If any of you on the council have not had to Bronstein experience, you're missing something. Harvey is a passionate Southfielder. He has been a person who has continuously stayed faithful in being, having standards. When you talk about a Southfield standard, Harvey has a standard. And whenever he sees any threat to that, he immediately engages his power of want to ensure that we keep Southfield on task. And it's with honor that we recognize Harvey as his wonderful wife, Marion. And we've had the pleasure of attending Young Israel where they also recognized him for the 2013 Young Israel Southfield Service Award and for his, for both he and his wife, long and distinctive service and education, careers in education. He's currently still teaching.
Till the end of the year.
Till the end of the year. And I have a strange feeling he'll find his way into someone's classroom after the end of the year. So it's, I can say personally as the mayor of Southfield, how much I appreciate both of you, how much I'm proud that you are a part of this community, and that I join others in recognizing you, and this is our night to pay tribute to you and thank you for your service. Mr. Seiver.
Whereas longtime residents Harvey and, Harvey, excuse me, Harvey and Marion Bronstein have called Southfield home since 1978. And where. It's 30, no, far than that.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, thirty-eight years.
My pen is up there, so. This is the Bronstein treatment, yours, originally, I recognize. Whereas the Bronsteins were selected as the 2013 recipients of the Young Israel Southfield Binion Old Service Award for their lifetime of community service at a special reception program and dinner held in their honor. And whereas among the many prominent political figures who spoke at the event were U.S. Senator Debbie Stavonow, U.S. Congressman Garrett Peters, State Representative Rhi Haas, Southfield Mayor Brenda Lawrence, and yours truly. And whereas along active civic and political affairs, the Bronsteins have been honored supporters of the Young Israel of Southfield, the Southfield Community, and various Jewish causes, including the Jewish Federation, the Jewish Community Relations Council, JAR, the United Jewish Foundation, Hebrew Free Loan Association, American Jewish Committee, and the Michigan Jewish Historical Society. And whereas the Bronsteins have also both dedicated their lives professionally to education, shaping minds of young and old for many years. And whereas Mrs. Bronstein has worked in adult Jewish education through the Jewish Federation of Metro Harlem Detroit for the past eighteen years, and Mr. Bronstein is a professor of business administration at Oakland Community College for the past forty-five years. And whereas Mr. Bronstein has been a member of the Orchard Ridge Business Faculty since 1968 and is particularly well-known at the college and the community for his popular speaker series he conducted in the Smith Theater from 1982 to 2000. The series featured guests of local, state, and national prominence whom Harvey was able to list at no cost because of his extensive contacts in the business and political community. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate Harvey and Marion Bronstein on their many achievements, including the 2013 Young Israel of Southfield Service Award, in addition to their long and distinguished careers in education. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield confer this resolution of tribute at the meeting of August 26, 2013, to the Bronsteins. Congratulations.
Can anybody, whoever, please?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, everybody, of course. I'm going to take two, three minutes, I thought.
All right.
A lot of.
Sit down, Harvey.
No, really. First of all, Your Honor, Mayor Lawrence, Council President Seiver, distinguished city council, thank you, thank you very much. Marion and I are honored by Your Honor, but more importantly, here to represent the Young Israel of Southfield. I don't know if you know, we've recently added our third wing. We have in the last five years, forty-five new families that have come to us, mostly young families with children. And we're, we've helped, I think, solidify property and property values in the community. And it's something that a lot of people doubted, and a lot of people were very contentious, but we went ahead and did it, and it's a wonderful story. We've got local moves and here's some national moves on the synagogue not very far from you, so thank you. Everybody, Morrison, too. Everybody Morrison, synagogue.
Well, as long as my servants eat, Saturday morning. I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for recognizing the Bronsteins for their years of service to both the synagogue as well as the city and the broader community. And just to reiterate, Harvey said, there's a lot of excitement going on in the city of Southfield and our Young Israel community. We now have a major problem in our synagogue. We don't have a place for all the strollers. It's just beautiful to see all the children in the community and people. When we get another six, then we do it this, this summer, and we just love partnering with the, the city and growing our wonderful city. So thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
If I just may ask, Harvey has become a good friend of mine. We, there's no one quite like Harvey in this community and Mrs. Bronstein as well. Harvey and I go out and grab lunch about every other month, so I get to catch up, get some advice, whether it's solicited or not, and really just pick at his brain. He has a deep passion for this city, and I'm, of course, I'm so proud to call him a friend, so proud to call him just a supporter of the city of Southfield, supporter of Young Israel, and it's a well-deserved honor. I was also at, at that dinner, and you know, not many people can get a United States senator in the room, but Harvey could. So absolutely a wonderful award and a wonderful honor to a great couple here in Southfield.
Thank you. We're going to move on. Next, we have appointments, and I believe, Mayor, these are yours.
To the council, tonight, for the city center advisory board, which you know has been, has some defined roles in that area of the city, as we all know, has so much opportunity for development. We are really working hard to keep the writing up the table, and I'm asking for the reappointment based on their participation, and you should have in your package their, their application, but it's a reappointment of Doug Ecken to the city center advisory board, and Kimberly has to, to the city center advisory board.
It's been moved by Ms. Jordan and supported by Mr. Fraser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have minutes. I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move the regular meeting of June 17th, the special meeting of June 27th, the committee as a whole meeting on July 15th, and the committee as a whole meeting of July 29th is submitted to council.
Mr. Board. Okay. It's been moved in support. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're moving right on to our consent agenda. We, this evening, we have items A through H. Is there anyone that the council wishes to vote, or otherwise I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda after I read the items. Hearing none, let me go ahead and read the items. On tonight's consent agenda, these are, all of these things have been discussed at previous meetings by the council. We are, the first item is what our city administrator calls a textbook example of a public-private partnership between the city of Southfield and the business community, as well as a collaborative effort between governmental agencies, namely the city of Southfield and the Michigan Department of Transportation. Under this agreement, for the rehabilitation of the 11-mile road bridge over the Pernik Creek, the city has been awarded a grant of $185,000 from MTA's Transportation Economic Development Fund, the maximum allowable under the grant, under this grant program, in recognition of the retention and growth in good-paying jobs at BASF and adjacent enterprises that will be facilitated by this bridge rehabilitation project. The total cost of the project is $305,447, with the MTA grants providing 61% of the funding, and the Southfield Major Street budget for 2013, 14, augmented by the, our insurance risk retention fund covering the remaining 39%. This project, we've reviewed at the August 19th study session and an earlier meeting, if I recall, and the project is anticipated to be completed by November of 2013. Item B is an award to the Detroit Salt Company to supply de-icing salt, which is an annual expenditure at $46.51 per ton for the upcoming winter season. This price will be held flat for the third consecutive year. Total expenditures for this purpose in the 2013-14 budget are anticipated to be $479,000. Funds are provided for this item on the, our streets and highway and parking creation budgets. Item C is an award to bid to H2O Utility Services of Burton, Michigan, not to exceed the amount of $311,792 for the installation of replacement commercial water meters and reading devices as part of the city's multi-year commercial change-out program. Over time, as, as water meters age, they tend to run slow, and consequently, they either need to be repaired, but if they're running slow, that means that the city is losing money. And so we are on a program to replace these meters. So funds are provided for this purpose in the 2013 water and sewer budget. Item D is the award to bid to North Coast Product of Monroe, Ohio for the equipment and emulsion configuration for the dirt patcher. This is the spray-on crack patcher, or pah-oh patcher that the city has been using since about four, five years. The dirt patcher system provides better adherence and longer-lasting repairs than traditional methods. The vendor has held the price flat for this year, and a total of $57,000. Funds are provided in our major and local streets budget for this. Item CAE is the replacement of a seven-year-old fleet surveillance vehicle with well over 100,000 miles on it and facing substantial repairs. $30,000 was budgeted for this purpose, with the actual cost coming in at $22,798 from La Fontaine Chevrolet of Saline, Michigan, and purchased under the auspices of the Oakland County Purchasing Cooperative. This item was previously reviewed on April 22nd. Item CAF is the authorization to solicit bids for cable television upgrades. The cable studio was remodeled in 2001, and major changes in television technology have occurred since then, rendering some of the components of the studio mismatched or outdated. This matter is reviewed at the committee as a whole on August 19th. All purchases, this is just authorization to solicit bids, this is not the purchase of the, of the equipment, so all purchases will be, will come back before state council for approval. And item G and H are minor adjustments to previous, to items that were previously approved by council. The first is the corporate name change for improved money managers for the Southfield employee, employee retirement system. The second is a matter of. The second is a matter of minor language change in the April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen standard resolution involving the issuance of an industrial facilities exemption certificate to Cybernetics Corporation. The change was made to incorporate new language required by the Michigan Department of Treasury. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A, D, C, D, E, F, G, and H.
Supported. Moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Jordan. Ms. Jordan has a comment or a question?
No questions. Through the chair to Mr. Sherret. This is our consent agenda, item D, regarding the purchase of the insult for the potholes. Will we be filling or installing the potholes this year, or is it waiting to be changed?
It's continuous, so we're working with the equipment right now.
Okay. Very good. That's very nice. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, and then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a consent agenda approved. All right, we're moving right along. Next, we go on to our consent agenda, and rather, from our consent agenda, we go on to public hearing. And, Mr. Crowe, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you to introduce GP twelve fifty-nine, SP thirteen oh four.
Thank you. Through the chair. GP twelve fifty-nine, SP thirteen oh four is a special use and site plan review request of Eric Gillar of GE Transport Corp. on behalf of the owner of Paradise Properties to use the existing building and property located at two three eight zero zero West Eight Mile Road as an dispatch and repair facility. You can have sedan, non-ambulatory vans and buses. The property is located on the north side of West Eight Mile Road between Sherman Avenue and Telegraph Road. I have a brief video on this subject at this time.
GP twelve fifty-nine, SP thirteen oh four is a special use and site plan review request of Eric Gillar of GE Transport Corp. on behalf of the owner of Paradise Properties to use the existing building and property located at two three eight zero zero West Eight Mile Road as an auto dispatch and repair facility. The property is located on the north side of Eight Mile Road between Sherman Avenue and Telegraph Road in section thirty-three of the city. The subject's property is owned B three general business and C vehicular parking. The property to the north is known RM multiple family low-rise. The property to the west is owned B three general business. The property to the south across Eight Mile Road is known for multiple family use in the city of Detroit. The properties to the east and across Sherman Avenue are owned B three general business and RM multiple family low-rise. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject's property is vacant. The property to the north is developed with the Southfield State Condom and Ennis. The property to the west contains a vacant warehouse use. The property to the south across Eight Mile Road is developed with an apartment complex within the city of Detroit. The properties to the east and across Sherman Avenue are developed with a gas station, single-family home, and applewood apartments. The site contains two point eight nine acres of land with two hundred and forty-two feet of frontage on Eight Mile Road and a depth of three hundred and ninety-one feet. The special use requested is permit an automobile and service facility within the B three general business district. The submitted site plan requests the use of the existing building and property as a dispatch and repair facility for cabs, sedans, non-ambulatory vans, and buses. The parking required is eighteen pieces with thirty-six provided, thirty-six cars and three buses. The land space provided conforms to ordinance requirements. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use and site plan work, the special use and site plan with new standards of zoning ordinance, the proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, noting technology corridor subareas for this parcel, and sufficient to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
Through the chair. The planning department received an application on June third, two thousand thirteen. The planning commission held a public hearing on July twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen and made a favorable recommendation. Earlier this evening, the site plan committee met and gave a favorable recommendation moving forward to city council. Our August twenty-six planners recommend resolution for the city council has ten items. We add in eleventh that a lot combination is required from the assessors department, and we recommend favorable approval. We have representatives from GE Transport here to give a brief overview of his business and to answer any questions that the council may have.
Let's start with Laura Sherret. Please state your name and address, business address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Eric Gillar. Business address is twenty-three eight hundred West Eight Mile, Oakland County, Southfield, Michigan. Do you want to hold your address outside?
No, that's fine.
We're third generation, family-owned business. We've been operating out of the city of Detroit. I've been working there since I graduated high school in ninety-five. We were digging the taxicabs back in the day when there was a need for taxicabs in the city of Detroit. A lot has changed. We've kind of got out of the taxicab business and started buying luxury sedans like a Lincoln Town Car, similar like Metro Car, and trying to promote this type of business. Also, we've been moving to medical transportation, hauling patients to and from clinics. Those vehicles are licensed with the state. We do work everywhere in the state, calling people to and from clinics for appointments. And also, we have two pairlift vans that we're using now for hauling people to their appointments also.
Okay. All right, we're -- I'm gonna ask you to have a seat, and we will open a public hearing on this matter, and then we'll come back to it. So, I'm gonna declare the public hearing on GP twelve fifty-nine, site plan thirteen oh four, special use and site plan review, open for the GE Transport Corp.
Are we ready?
Good evening, and any time you're ready to start.
Well, I wanna make sure it's set for five minutes.
I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening, council. My name is Pamela Gerald. My address is three oh five one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. I was listening to the television recording regarding this project, and I would like clarification as to the type of business. I think dispatch, repair facility for these types of vehicles is a bit ambiguous. I wanna know, in what capacity do you mean dispatch, repair? Is this going to be a parking lot with all of these disabled vehicles? You mentioned medical transportation. Is it gonna take away from the transportation that our fire department does? I just have a lot of concerns, and then my last concern would be the landscaping. It was stated on the tape that the property is in compliance with some kind of landscaping ordinance. I'd like more information about that. So, before you just approve, do your due diligence and ask a lot of questions and get more information. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, may I have a -- let me finish the public hearing first, and then we're in a little while. I'd like to question the speaker now, and our intention to speak about it. Can you wait till after we --
You haven't lived in the city?
Okay. Mr. Lam, I'm gonna ask you to wait till after we conclude the public hearing. Ms. Gerald, your time is up. All right, anyone else wishing to address the --
I just wanted to talk about the medical transportation. Thank you.
You sit down, please sit down. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the public on the special use and site plan request? And please keep your comments germane to the items that we're having a public hearing about. Good evening, Mr. Mullen.
Good evening, Dr. Seibert. Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mullen. My address is Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Council's legal notice for this public hearing, the GP twelve fifty-nine, is improperly written because this notice fails to describe properly the true nature of this request as required by state law. Instead, council states only that this is a special use request, but there are thirteen different types of special uses. So, which special use are we talking about here tonight? Only a true genius can really ferret out what this public hearing is all about. Now, in regards to this petitioner's request, I have two concerns. Concern number one, this petitioner's front yard setback is non-conforming. It's only twenty feet, eight inches deep. The minimum setback requirement for this district is twenty-five feet, and for this special petitioner's special use, forty feet per section five point one six nine, subsection two, D three. Concern number two, I surmise that this petitioner's business is not of a retail nature. If this be true, then council is precluded by law from approving this petitioner's request for section five point one seven zero, subsection one. I quote, "All business establishments shall be retail or service establishments dealing directly with consumers," unquote. This is a nineteen eighty-nine law, a statute law, but today, this council runs a fiat law. So, again, it appears that you folks here will be slipping another one past the goalie tonight. Why not? If council members can at will park illegally in front of city hall like official criminals with immunity, you folks can surely violate state law and city code with immunity by approving GP twelve fifty-nine tonight. Why not? I'm just one voice, just one only voice in the wilderness. Any folks here, the game is seven, are the elected officials, whether it is show or not? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the public?
Good evening. My name is Geraldine Amato. I'm staying here in Southfield, and my information is in your file. I would like to affirm what the previous speaker spoke of. It seems that he's done some research. I'm here only with the information presented at this meeting. And my concern is there's not enough information for a true public hearing, but then I'm not surprised about that. And my concern would be the air pollution for the residential contiguous properties or the properties right within that area. And while I'm up here, I would like to ask, following your consent agenda, you list any item on the consent agenda will be removed for discussion upon the request of council member, the mayor, or a member of the public, but since I've been here, I never heard you offer that invitation to the public or explain to them how they can ask for a consent agenda item to be removed for discussion. I'd appreciate it if at some time you would do that. Under this private commercial jurisdiction, we know that public comment at these meetings is a mere ritual, and that oftentimes it's received with hostility and lack of appreciation. I'm a senior, and I had senior appreciation week last week, but I've never received appreciation from this body at any time for coming here in my own volition, trying to share with you those things I have learned, which I thought I should have been taught sixty years ago, and I'm only learning them the last twenty years. And as you get older, you don't have as much strength, energy, and resources to act upon what you know. And then we're separated, the seniors are actually separated from the mainstream society, segregated in these facilities, they call it senior citizen homes, et cetera. So, their wisdom, if they have any, if they're not old fools, cannot even be shared with the younger generation. This is a deliberate strategy to keep the elders from really communicating what they have learned to the younger generation. I am one who feels very frustrated about that because I have much I would like to share, that I think is important for the future of this nation. We are being deceived on every hand. And such moves as this, I mean, people at Scrambling do business. I don't, you know, fault those people that are trying to set up business and make a living, so-called. But this impetus to make a living at any cost, at any time, according to the parameters that the master has set for us, is gonna do us in, is doing us in, and it's premeditatedly planned to do us in, because we are removing ourselves from every opportunity to control the resources that give us our livelihood, our ability to live on this earth and this society. We're being separated, and it's all being given to some malevolent overlords that plan to use that power to reduce this nation to a totalitarian regime. I know it's off the subject of President Seibert, but it's not really off the subject of what the county needs to us. I mean, some of us need to get geared and do something different than other routine things for the immediate, you know, immediate need for the time, but we need to be looking a little bit further. And good evening.
This is the public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Lam, you have to speak.
I have spoken already.
Excuse me.
I have spoken already.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Ms. Seymour?
This isn't directly related to public hearing, but it is. Point out if there's an error in the minutes of the site plan committee in the very last line, that the site plan presented was acceptable and agreed against the August twenty-eighth regulation. It should have changed to the twenty-sixth.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Through the chair, I make a motion to reapprove of GP twelve fifty-nine, SP thirteen oh one, et cetera, use in site plan meeting for the GE Transport Corp.
Moved by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Boss. Is there any other council comment? Mr. Crowe?
Through the chair, it's a friendly amendment. Ms. Jordan, could you include that one additional item about a lot combination is required from the assessors department to our August twenty-six recommendation?
All right, including the recommendation by the panel for the additional item.
Okay. And --
Support.
All right. I do have a question to petitioner. I may have missed this, but what are the hours of operation?
We're at twenty-four seven.
Okay.
We're basically, the office hours are from nine to five, but we have --
This is --
Twenty-four hours.
And the vehicles, are they going to enter and exit on Abrams?
Correct.
Okay. So, you won't be using Sherman?
Not at all.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? In this --
James?
Yes, Ms. Lawrence?
The dispatch will be twenty-four seven. Cars or vehicles will be coming in and out of the lot twenty-four hours a day.
They could possibly, they either, depending if they have a light bulb or a brake light out or an issue with one of the vehicles, that's what the mechanics would therefore impact that the light bulb needs to change its tire, which all have an old inside of the building.
Oh, the inside of the building.
Correct.
I just wanted to be clear, there will be -- I just want to be clear, there will be no outdoor noises at three o'clock or whatever.
We've had, like I said, we're moving from our current location, and we've been down there for thirty-five years, and we've never had issues with people parking vehicles. If there ever was an issue with a machine or motor in the area...
If we do...
Lift the microphone up so especially people at home can hear you.
Is it any of Mr. Planer's strokes that restrict outside? We've never had problems with it. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Through the chair, item, no pretend to the mayor, repairs to fleet vehicles shall only be done in the enclosed building service space, and there are three service spaces that are provided.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is, Seymour mentioned that there was an error in the minutes in the council site plan committee meeting in August 26th, later. It's moved to the August 28th, later, meeting, should be the 26th. We got me correct, please?
Yes, we caught that. As you recall, Mr. Spence just typed those up prior to the meeting.
Yeah, we just tell it tonight.
Yep.
All right, at this point then, we have no other public hearings, we have no site plans, so we're going to move right into communications. And our first person to ask, and we recognize this evening, is Pamela Gerald. Good evening again, and you may start.
Good evening. Okay. I wanted to give a shout out to a dear and a friend of mine, Dr. Lloyd Cruz, who's a dean at the Open Community College campus. So I'm asking my resident friends to remember the name Lloyd Cruz. My name is Pamela Gerald. My address is P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, and I guess this would be geared towards administration, respectfully. And I think Mr. Jim Shurek is an awesome administrator for the city of Southfield, and I think he could be even more awesome if some of the members of council would just kind of loosen the chain and let him do his thing and run this city. But I wanted to ask a question. If you work part-time, thousand forty hours a week, I mean, a year, I'm not understanding how you're able to take that part-time, put it into a pension, and it counts as full-time. And if through the chair, the administrator can just explain it to me and the other residents of Southfield, it would be greatly appreciated. And then if that's something that you allow to be done, are all of the part-time employees here working for the city of Southfield, do they know that policy? Is that something that's discussed, to say that you can work ten years part-time, you can take that time, put it in your pension, it'll count as full-time, or if we've got you doing double duty, that you can negotiate that and use that as a means of allow me to do this, and then I'll do this extra work? I'm just not sure. So that's my first concern. And my second concern is just, residents have heard me say that it's time for a change, and we are going to have an election in the city of Southfield this November. And I just want the residents to pay attention to what's being said at these meetings, how these initiatives are being voted on, and remember the Christmas list or the Santa Claus list that I told you about. Mark down, out of all the people that's going to be running for office, who's naughty and who's nice? For example, a nice person would be someone that was smart enough to vote against, say, the Walmart issue with all of the facts that we knew that location would not be a good location. Someone that's naughty would be a person that was maybe in support of it. But just remember, it's time for a change. You've got the power of the pen at the election. You can mark the names that you want, and, you know, stay focused on the meeting, stay focused as to what's going on. Kind of take me out of your conversation. Just be focused on the issue at hand. And, Mr. President, you have got to, you're very diligent, but you've got to be a little bit more diligent to keep the members of council and also the members of the public focused on the issues that we're talking about. If you want me to be an issue, then put me on a consent agenda, and then you can discuss me thoroughly. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Charlie. Next, we have Gerard Mullen.
At any time you're ready, Ms. Mullen, I'll begin. Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mullen, AKA White Nice. My address is Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037, located in this city, the city of Sidewalk Hill, just one small quarter feet from that walking mecca, Lake Village. At the June 17th council meeting, I criticized council for making four overt legal errors and granting Denzel a tax abatement. Councilman Fraser fired that by taking a shot, a pot shot, at this. The messenger's sweatshirt by saying that the diagonal of the no symbol is backwards. So who's right? Who's wrong? Is Councilman Fraser, the elected official, whose wife has a PhD, right? Or is the dear messenger, the resident, who doesn't even have a GED, right? This is the critical question facing us tonight. In ancient times, such a dilemma would have been handled easily by Team Solomon without innovative and creative solution like cut the sweatshirt in half. Today, technology has displaced the wisdom of the king of Israel with Google. Google's answer can simply be found by Googling "no symbol" and then clicking on images. There you will find, in the words of Carl Sagan, billions and billions and billions of no symbols with the so-called backwards diagonal. This is just another example, another sorry example of a brain-dead council in action. Another sad tale in the continuing saga of the Gang of Seven that just can't shoot straight, as demonstrated by Councilman Fraser, who shot himself in the foot while trying to take a pot shot at this messenger. On another note, on this day in 1939, on a Saturday, six days prior to Hitler's invasion of Poland, the first televised Major League Baseball game was broadcasted by NBC from high atop the Empire State Building in New York City. The game, actually, is a winner, was between the Cincinnati Reds and the Brooklyn Dodgers ahead of its field in Brooklyn. The Reds won the first game, five to two, the Dodgers the second, six to one. Red Bart, who the play-by-play announcer, ad-libbed the three commercials for Irish soap, the soap that's ninety-nine percent pure, Wheaties, the breakfast of champions, and the mobile gas stations, the folks with the flying red horse. The doubleheader was seen on about four hundred TV sets by estimated three thousand fans, which included viewers at the World's Fair. Oh, and one last thing, Mr. President, would you please inform the President Proton, that is Councilwoman Jordan, that her estate is still parked illegally in front of City Law? I don't appreciate it. Every law a Biden citizen doesn't appreciate it. The police department doesn't appreciate it, and most of all, the fire department doesn't appreciate it. We are all now less safe due to her thoughtless and illegal behavior. This is again just another example, another sorry example of your brain-dead council in action. Another sad tale in the continuing saga of the Gang of Seven that just can't shoot straight or park straight. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
And Ms. Rose, you may start at any time.
My name is Uni Rose. I live at 26477 Franklin Point Drive, here in Southfield, 48034. Good evening to all of you. Way back in 2009, I learned that the historic Michigan State Fairgrounds was going to be closed. I, along with hundreds of others, spoke out at public meetings to prevent this action. I stressed that this fair went back to 1849 and provided many wars, beginning with the Civil War, all the way through the midwestern wars, Middle Eastern wars that we're having now, plus a depression and a couple of recessions. I also said that once something historic is closed, it never returns. I spoke of the year-round programming of agriculture, horseback riding lessons, arts and crafts, together with the youth center, plus the two-week fair that brought thousands of people and their children who learned from the end of the fair that their vegetables, fruits, milk, and meat did not originate in plastic wrap. All of this, plus concerts made the state fairgrounds a treasure. Of course, no one listened to us. The fair closed Labor Day weekend of 2009 after having presented to then-government random fifty-five thousand signatures, fifty-five thousand, begging to save the fair. I learned later that this closing was a bad room deal made by the English administration and carried out by the ran home. We never stood a chance. I've come tonight to thank you for your beautiful letter to the Michigan Land Bank on behalf of the citizens of Southfield regarding the redevelopment of the state fairgrounds. However, your idea of including the community in the planning of the redevelopment fell on deaf ears. The land bank has paid no attention to letters such as ours, yours, ideas from experts from around the world, your community input, including hundreds of signatures from all over the state. The land bank rushed through the process, thus allowing little or no time for competitive bids. Question here is, what can Michigan show the world? Another stale strip mall? Or a place of complete streets, homes, a state-of-the-art music venue, shopping, exhibition, education, and agriculture, and most important, a public transit hub? Now that we have the RTA in place, this is a no-brainer. So I'm asking you to use your influence and work with our Southfield legislators and others to reopen the discussion so that the people of the state can have their say in this important development. Oh, by the way, interesting, community input was sought for the Gateway Project, I believe, Marlon Woodward. The people specifically said they did not want a strip mall. Have you been there? It's a strip mall. Nobody paid attention to them. So, so much for community input. We here in Southfield are so proud that you put us first in all negotiations. We look to you now to help us put in a development that will put Michigan on the map as the place, the place of innovation and community spirit. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Ms. Rose. Thank you. Next on our agenda is Ms. Geraldine Amato.
Good evening. My name is Geraldine Amato. Last time I was here, I mentioned the NAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. I have learned since I've been out of school that the reference to colored people does not intend to mean one's complexion or one's ethnicity or ancestry physiologically. It's in reference to new status of citizenship, artificially incorporated persons under color of law, and it includes all of us. And the Civil War was a major turning point in consolidating control in the central government run by people who are not good people. And increasingly, the fruits of their labor are becoming more oppressive to the good people of this nation and more noticeable. And yet, since sacred old propaganda machine, the press, the media, the school curriculums, the entertainment world, et cetera, et cetera, most of us don't make the linkage in our minds. We don't get it. Besides that, there is numerous programs to deprive us of our vitality mentally, emotionally, as well as physically. It's no mere coincidence that Alzheimer's is growing amongst the elders, and amongst the younger, we have more cancers and more psychological imbalances, as the industry describes it. These are premeditatedly put into motion conspiracy projects. They have plotted and schemed together, those malevolent overlords or masterminds of the bringing down of a nation that had a dream, they mentioned Martin Luther King's dream lately, but the dream was to have a truly representative government where the people had a link to who was in charge. That is no longer the case. We have a top-down government. All public officials are controlled from the top, and the further you go up, the more corrupt. And most of us had yielded to the pressure to comply rather than resisting. And I think it was someone important that said, once people lose the spirit of resistance, they are doomed to suffer enslavement or the loss of liberty. Martin King was assassinated, I believe, shortly after it was noticed that he was willing to start questioning what he had been involved in for so many years. And if you look at the assassination scheme, the numerology is involved there, and also the name of the motel has a reference to the Cross of Lorraine, which represents the double cross. And in the pulpits of this nation's Christian communities, we have many or most double-crossed Christians, those who pretended to be Christians and are not, and they are there to control the Christian population. And we can see the same parallels in the other organized religious associations. But it's going to take the good people, willing to get under the counsel of the Holy Spirit or the one true living God, take their own personal march in order to move on out. This nation is doomed if we do not change course. The ship of state is on a treacherous course. We have the fiftieth anniversary of the March on Washington. I argue, after I've experienced and served and heard testimonies of government organized crime, that we need an armed march on Washington to remove these lying, thieving, murderous scoundrels from positions of authority over the good people of this nation. We no longer have true lawful local police powers. Local police powers are supposed to be under the direct control of the people, who are directly elected sheriffs with their deputies. The sheriff now is appointed essentially, and the electorate are not the voters. The voters are permitted to ratify who has already been selected and elected by... The voters are permitted to ratify who has already been selected and elected by the establishment. If you're willing to go along with the program, you're allowed to get votes, and your votes are allowed to be counted. If you are a willing player, you are allowed to meet the public through the PR system and the public, whatever they call it.
Mr. Monto, you have 15 seconds.
Civil rights are not inalienable natural human rights. Civil rights are those privileges granted to us by a central government, human authority. Inalienable natural human rights are those rights given to us by our Creator.
Mr. Monto, your time is up, Mr. Monto.
You're an evil and vicious person to turn the microphone off in that instance.
Next, we have, uh, Richard Melzer. Good evening, Mr. Melzer.
Good evening.
Your name and address to the record, and you have five minutes.
Richard Melzer, 20850 Winkin, Southfield. Almost two years ago, the Southfield City Council passed a resolution expressing its concern for so-called smart meters that were being deployed by our electric company, DTE. The biological effects of long-term exposure to the numerous radio frequency or RF pulses and data collection privacy were primary concerns. Over a period of months, about two dozen other communities also passed similar resolutions. I had been involved in that effort and continued along with others to pursue that issue in court and before the Public Service Commission. The public pressure resulted in DTE offering a soon-to-be-implemented opt-out program for those customers choosing to decline installation of a smart meter. It is also noteworthy that DTE did send us letters about its intent to deploy smart meters. But I'm not here tonight to present biomedical studies that further document the RF hazard or talk about the politics of regulatory agencies. Rather, I am here to express my surprise when I recently realized that my water meter now broadcasts my usage data every few seconds like a DTE smart meter. Seeing water meters on a recent council agenda I inquired about the system, Mike Habowski, our acting director of Public Works, wrote in several emails that we did have a broadcast deep water meter, but that it was a one-way system and only transmitted when the meter reader drove by in a truck. If the system actually worked that way, I'd have no problem with it. However, Mr. Habowski was in error, and I would like to thank he had no intent to deceive me. Several weeks ago, at a city administrative meeting, I distributed a copy of the specification sheet for the water meter installed on my home. It showed a broadcast schedule of every five seconds, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, forever. That's over 17,000 pulses per day. The data keeps being broadcast whether or not anyone is there to read it. Southfield reads water meters only once every two months. So for the sake of a 10-second drive-by reading, the resident is exposed to 1,020,000 RF pulses. Now let me clarify an important point and it may be the source of confusion regarding this matter. Mr. Habowski sent me information detailing that the water meters were not smart meters. But that's only because the water meters do not fully support all smart meter functions like remote turn-on and turn-off. But as I've described in some of the most important ways, it functions just like a smart meter. The problem here is that if asked, "Is that water meter a smart meter?", no might be the answer given. That could lead to the erroneous conclusion with which we are now confronted. And be aware for future considerations that actual smart water meters are coming on the market. So here we are, communities and individuals struggling with DTE and the Public Service Commission for the right to control our environment, people accusing DTE of insensitivity and demanding the right to opt-out. And while that fight was raging, Southfield has been implementing smart-type water meters without informing its residents or offering any type of opt-out program. Kind of ironic, don't you think? Incidentally, a Southfield friend recently called to tell me he had his DTE smart meter and his water meter independently measured for RF levels. The water meter had the higher RF reading. In the current scenario, Southfield controls its own policies and actions. The Public Service Commission has no jurisdiction over water, and here it offers no shield of protection to municipalities similar to the way it insulates DTE from the public. So one wonders, how did this happen? Maybe it's confusion over the smart meter labeling. What's done is done, but that does not mean residents seeking remedies cannot be accommodated. I have several ideas on how this might be accomplished, which I will gladly discuss with those interested. I am now calling our council to show the same concern it did nearly two years ago and take up this topic for immediate attention, but do not throw it back to the water department. Concerned residents should contact your city officials about the water meters. And also Rudy House in Lansing, asking him to support the current legislation to further extend homeowner rights regarding the DTE smart meters. And I noticed on the agenda, there's some commercial, uh, bidding for water meters. Now, that is commercial, and that makes it a little bit different. But by the same token, you know, we have kind of, you know, cast our fate here in stone. And, uh, I don't have a positive sense of question, you know, as to, uh, like I say, I have ideas as to what could be done. To ignore it, I think, would be very negative for Southfield. Independent measurements have been made in environments, and we'll give it to Southfield.
Mr. Melzer.
Can you finish that sentence? I'd love to.
Yeah, um, Mr. Sharet, um, uh, wanted to make a clarifying statement or call on someone to do the same on this, so, um, Mr. Melzer, you can have a seat, and I'm turning the floor over to Mr. Sharet.
Uh, yes, through the chair. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. A.J. Jensen of our Public Works Group, and he's done considerable research in this area. Uh, the question is whether we want to engage, uh, challenging some of the assumptions of the speaker, Mr. Melzer, or, you know, whether we should take it up at another time.
I talked to A.J., excuse me for interrupting. I'll give you the product sheet again.
Okay. Um, Mr. Melzer, I offered last week to meet with you, and I'm still very happy to meet with you. So, uh, if you'd like to set a time, I'd be glad to hear your ideas. And, um, I can tell you, as one person, uh, I was not, uh, when we did the DTE, it's a whole other ballgame because of the data collection and all of that. I really wasn't, I didn't connect the dots between water and electricity, you know, for what that's worth to you.
Well, I'm agreeing, because I was surprised myself. I had no word that Southfield had made this much.
But I can't get into debate here because we have others who...
I do understand. I don't need to create a debate.
All right, I'm going to move on to, uh, Mr. Fred Bunker. Mr. Bunker here. Um, let the record show that Mr. Bunker is not in attendance. And, um, then we will move on to the council's portion of the agenda. And the first thing that we have, um, coming up in a couple of weeks, September 18th to be exact, is the, um, annual, uh, fall meeting of the Michigan Municipal League. And, uh, we need to designate a voting delegate. Uh, I believe the meeting this year is in Detroit. Mr. Fraser usually is...
That's true.
Um, uh, and, uh, do we have a volunteer to be the voting delegate, Mr. Fraser?
I'll move in, Mr. Fraser. Yeah, I'll support that.
All right, um, is there, it's been moved and supported by Mr. Fraser to be our delegate. Um, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right.
But remember, sure that Mr. Fraser did vote.
Uh, Ms. Seymour.
What do we, what does the delegate vote on? I mean, do we know what is going to be voted on for that?
Not at this time. Well, one of the things that will be voted on are the new, uh, members to the Board of Directors, Board of Trustees to the Michigan Municipal League, but any other issues that come forth.
Well, I'm getting, I have a point to make.
That's a business meeting.
I know it's a business meeting, but years ago, um, as a member of council, we used to have some sense of what, what position we would take on this, but we don't even know what you're going to vote on.
Won't know until you get there.
Does that make a difference?
Won't know until you get there.
So we leave it up to the delegate to make the decision to vote for.
Yeah.
Uh, in your packet, it outlines the three things. Throw down the core legislative principles document, election of trustees, and then other business that comes before it. But, um, your question is really what's the other business? We'll have to answer that.
We've always seen that. Thank you.
Some things are brought forward from the floor, so...
Well, I don't care.
All right, then we'll move on to, we have an expense report for Donald Ficassi.
Mr. President.
To attend the Economic Club Chairman's Dinner in Dearborn.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the expense report for Mr. Ficassi for attending the Detroit Economic Club Annual Chairman's Dinner. Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Uh, standing? Uh, one extension and five supports, motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we, we approve the expense report for Mr. Jeremy Moss for expenses incurred while attended the Michigan Political Leadership Program.
All right, second. Uh, support, thank you. Uh, it's been moved by, um, Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Ficassi. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Aye.
All right, and one extension, uh, six, one. Um, any other items by council this evening? Yes, Ms. Seymour.
I do have something. I sent a letter to council this past week, um, that I would like to read. A couple of people told me they didn't get it, so I don't know if everyone got it, but I'd like to read it into the record as a concern that we've talked about relating to what's been going on in the city center. And I would like to read it into the record and have it, uh, become part of the minutes for begin, if I may.
Thank you.
To my council colleague, in a recent law planning session, city council identified the city center as its top priority. The city center project has a thirty-year history in Southfield. At the June 17, 2013 meeting, city council concurred with the city planners' May 3, 2013 administrative approval of a site plan submitted by Galkarp, representing the owner Eugene Applebaum, with respect to property at 20300 Civic Center Drive, Southfield, Michigan, the goal number 2422276017. Council also directed the building official and the city attorney's office to draft language, modify in section 5.22, and print section 8.10 of the zoning ordinance to clarify that administrative approval of a site plan may only be undertaken within the parameters set forth in the ordinance and circumstances involving, in addition to existing buildings. Section 5.22 in print 10 states, "The city planner shall be authorized to review and approve amendments to previously approved site plans when said amendment is for expansion of floor space which is no greater than 25% of the gross square footage and not to exceed 10,000 square feet or 930 square meters of a previously approved site plan and provided the amendment meets all the requirements of this chapter. The planner's administrative approval did not take into account that the proposed plan needed to first be presented to the zoning board of appeals for variance. The fact that the proposed plan first needs variance from the ZBA proves that the plan did not pose meet all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. I have serious concerns about recent events regarding the development of the outlaw as the arbor loss in the city center. The proposed outlaw development fronting the arbor loss was approved with a drive, pardon me, was approved with a drive-through. The approved site plan with the drive-through has no specified use. It may be a coffee house or a bank or some other use. The mission of the city center is to create and maintain a vibrant 24/7 pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use environment. There is nothing pedestrian-friendly about the drive-through. In the spirit of, in the, excuse me. In the spirit of transparency and as a matter of remedy, I am requesting the following. Number one, a full and complete site plan with elevations as approved should be provided to city council as a matter of public record and accountability. The attached five-and-a-half-by-11-inch document does not meet the zoning ordinance's requirements for a site plan for section 5.22, and that's this one. And then second amendment zoning ordinance to require that developers submit an exterior materials project board, including brick, glass, metal, color, et cetera. And if I may insert, planning commission said they do get that, but council does not. So I'm suggesting we amend the zoning ordinance to require. Third, a thorough review of the city planner's site plan administrative approval authority. And lastly, council must be involved every step of the way. Many believe that administrative approvals violate the public trust. In the spirit of, in the spirit of transparency, these types of things must be presented in the proper public forum. And I'd like to state that this letter grew out of several comments made to me by others, and I, and I concur with their concerns. And I will have a copy for the city clerk. And I would like it to make part of the minutes for debate. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Seymour, I did receive your letter, and it's my understanding that on Wednesday, um, the issue of the language regarding the administrative approval by the planner is subject to review at the Legislative Committee as the first step. Uh, is there anyone else that wishes to, um, council has an item they'd like to bring forward?
I'm coming.
Seeing not, not, yes?
Is the council president, in a bid to act, who obtained a copy of what?
Yes.
I have a copy for you. Thanks.
No, I have a copy for you.
Okay. Um, and I would suggest that a copy of the letter also, I noticed it wasn't C.C. to, um, Mr. Crood, that it also be seized, a copy be sent.
I can do that.
Um, okay, uh, yeah, Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I attended the, uh, a couple of the events last week of recognizing and appreciation of the seniors in the city of Southfield, and both were well attended, especially the one on Wednesday night at the Verge. And, uh, the music was good, the company was great, and the weather was outstanding. And, uh, I just, and I, and I think all of the seniors that I talked with really appreciated the fact that the city of Southfield does appreciate the seniors. So, uh, it's kind of a pat on the back, but, uh, I think there really wasn't a lot of the effort to stop, smell roses, and pay attention to those folks at house where we are today.
All right, um, I enjoyed the event of Miss Banks, I think the mayor, and Mr. Moss were all there. Um, yeah. Oh, and Mr. Ficassi, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, I introduced you. How did I, yeah? Okay, uh, moving on then to the mayor's portion of the agenda.
Mr. President, I'll move the approval and acceptance of the expense report for Mayor Lawrence for attending the 2013 Michigan Association of Mayors meeting in Franklin, moved from August 7 to August 8 this year.
It's been moved by Mr. Moss, supported by Mr. Fraser. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, motion carries. Mayor, anything else you'd like to add this evening?
Yes, um, I'll just want to echo the appreciation week for seniors is something that during tough economic times, we were able to maintain and continue to do. And, um, I felt that it was, um, it was, like Councilman Fraser said, it was, uh, and then that we should be very proud of it. I'm proud that the city was able to maintain that during tough economic times. Couple of things I wanted to highlight. I did attend the Michigan Association of Mayors, um, training session this, um, past few weeks, and the whole session was on sense of play. So on a statewide level... So on a statewide level, mayors all around the state were talking about what they were talking to make their city a sense of place. They also did a seminar to, it was an activity, to identify leadership skills and why all of them play a role. And I could tell you, very eye-opening, you were, through the process, you identified yourself by color. And that color had certain traits. I could tell you, all of you were red, were red, that included myself. But at the end of the day, it talked about the value each had in running a great city. So if you are the person who is red and you always say, "No, we can't do that, that's not what we have done," um, there's a place for you in city government. If you're the person with the ideas, and you're always thinking outside of the box, and you don't even, you just bring the thoughts, there's a place for you. But then there's a place to keep the numbers, because the thought person doesn't always crush the numbers. So when the number person asks, "Well, how can we do that?" You know, and start crushing the numbers. Because if you don't have all of these different voices, you have a person that's just totally community-oriented, then you have the one that's just totally business-oriented. But in the, in the discussion and running an effective city, you have to have all those at the table. And it's, it may need to step back and think about the debate that we have, and how sometimes we are totally different pages. But at the end of the day, if you don't have all these different personalities or people with the different type of agendas, it, the government doesn't get worked to where it needed to be. And it's, it's gonna change, I would like for us to do that exercise. It, it doesn't take that long. But it really made me move to a higher level of respect for those who come at a discussion or a debate at a different level. And it basically made me walk away with a higher respect level. So I, I wanted to bring this back and ask the council to agree to that. I attended the Maida Side by fifteenth anniversary, um, just recently, there at the turn in our city that does so much. They have a mentoring academy that they partner with our field zone, and they are diligent as an organization, a turn for men, of mentoring young boys. And I have been at the field zone and listened to parents, single moms that walked in that were so appreciative of their service. And I just want to say happy anniversary to them again. And also, High Park Act has had their Community Day, which Mr. Ficassi is, and his, his family are very active in High Park Act. And it was just such a wonderful community that it was free to the community. They actually mailed a letter to my home inviting me as a part of the community. It was just a really good event, and I'm glad to see faith-based organizations in our community do these things. And I know that there's a number of faith-based that have those. And I just want to say thank you to the faith-based, because what you add to the community is something that enhances what the city does. I am very excited to say that I had my Let's Move program for this year, and we had over fifty kids come out, Disney came out, ran the camp. It was so good. And, and this little boy was leaving, he said, "Mayor, this has been the best day ever." And so it was really good. They gave him healthy food, they had exercise, Disney had a lot of fun activities for him. And I'm proud to say that I'm able to do the Let's Move camp without using any city funds. It's the community supporting that, and just leadership. I, I, for all those who volunteered and helped, I just want to say thank you, it was a wonderful thing. We had an interesting visit from a governor from Kenya. It was a delegation that came to town and asked to meet with the leadership of the city. And Kenya now has a new form of government, Councilman Cyber, President Cyber was able to attend that meeting. And it was interesting, because they were talking about the needs that they have to Kenya. And I was telling them about transportation and our roads. And I said, "Well, the bad road is one that's bumpy." And he said, "We would take that bad road any day." And it puts things in perspective, just to have a road. And we are complaining about our bumpy road. But they are, they really are, they're gonna come back, and they were really fascinated by our former government and impressed by the community that has a majority African-American population being thriving and successful community. Today, I attended the kickoff for our public schools, they're back to work. And it is just a really good day to be there and watch everyone gearing up to start educating our children. I couldn't end today without mentioning to me an event that just really touched my heart, disturbed me, angered me, and that was the event that happened this morning, where a seventeen-year-old child, along with three other children under eighteen, attempted a carjacking, and there was a off-duty police officer who responded to the threat of suicide. And the issue was, it was a fatal shooting. I, I, it bothers me so much that a young person, under the age of eighteen, is first of all, out in the community at two A.M., that they're armed with a gun, and they're motivated at that young age to commit a crime. And it's really, really bothers me. And, you know, we would love to save every child that's, that's in the city of Southfield. That would be my objective. We, we fought hard to have a field zone so that we support our community and provide a safe place. We, we partnered with the school district and provide a police officer to make sure that there is police protection, that the schools are safe. This is unacceptable in the city of Southfield, and I can't say that enough. First, first of all, someone that feels like in the city of Southfield that they're not safe, we fight hard, our police response, our training, and, and the people we select as officers, we do an excellent job. We're proud that we don't have the issues that other communities have. Here is a young person, and I call him a child, and they said, "Well, he was seventeen, but..." My son was seventeen, he was still my child. And it bothers me, we're still investigating it, and there's still some things coming out of it. But as a community, I don't think we can rest on our laurels. Whatever we can do, and we must do something. I remember when Councilman Fic, uh, Fraser and I sat down in the community and said we needed to start something to address our youth and to make sure that they were safe. And we, we pulled the community together. I don't think we do enough with our faith-based and including them, and programs and things that we can do for our children. I think we do an excellent job, but just today, my heart is broken. And I just look at all the other things that are happening, and it's not acceptable in Southfield, what happens. And we must continue to, to stay alert, to stay committed. You know, I don't like to talk about a single mom, and that's the problem. Then as a community, and that was one of the things that drove us funding the, the youth center, because since it showed us, we've got a very high number of single female head households. So it made sense for us to use our resources to create a youth center. And if any of you have been there and watched the mothers come in there and say, "If it wasn't for this, I'm a beautician, or I work, and I have somewhere safe for my house and eating, so I can get off work." And I may be unattentive, but it's just that moment of what's happened today that I want us as a community to continue for this to be unacceptable, not the norm, and to continue to fight to have a safe city for our children, supported and provided direction for them. Thank you.
Mayor Lawrence, I think that your remarks are well, well-taken, and that it's not acceptable, and that we, we agree with other families.
On all?
On a number of levels, that, that this, in some minds, is this is okay behavior. Um, Ms. Jordan asked to speak.
I was just gonna say, I, I really do want to applaud our seniors in the city of Southfield. And my comments really piggyback off of Mayor Lawrence. By the words, because this past week, I had an opportunity to be in Washington, D.C. in honor of the fiftieth year anniversary of the Dr. Marcus Teague Walk on, on the square in Washington. And, and my, my comment is, I just pray that in my lifetime, I see what he stood for and the dream that he had. Because we haven't, we haven't reached it yet, we have not reached his dream, or we have not seen it come to pass, maybe on a small level, but we have work to do. So I do want to honor those that, that moved toward his dream and his vision for this country and in the whole world. Thank you.
Uh, next we move on to the administration, anything to give me, Mr. Charette?
Uh, nothing to add this evening, thank you.
Okay. Uh, then we're gonna move on to the attorney, and Mr. Ward, you, we will be going into a closed session with you at the conclusion of the, this agenda. And you have two other questions for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have two lawsuits that were filed against the city. The first one was, was initiated by Mr. Stanley Williams versus the city of Southfield, that was filed in United States District Court, and Mr. Williams was, is alleging an excessive force that was used against him by the police department in, in the circumstances of his arrest. So we're asking the council to authorize to take whatever steps are necessary to defend the city in this manner.
So, move. Been moved by Mr. Fraser and supported by Ms. Jordan to approve the attorney defending the city in the Stanley Williams versus the city of Southfield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second matter is a matter that was initiated by Mr. Mrs. Ashakas versus the city. This one was filed in Opa County Circuit Court, involves a basement flooding from a sewer event that took place back in two thousand and eleven. Again, we're asking that the council authorize us to defend and take whatever actions necessary to defend the city.
Also move, Mr. Chairman, support. It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Fraser, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, anything else, Mr. Attorney?
Nothing, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, and then we will move on. We have a few things, a few words from our, our treasurer. Like, before we get to the treasurer, we do have an expense report for the treasurer.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the expense statement for Ms. Nancy Banks, the meeting, for attending a meeting at the Election Center Conference in Savannah, Georgia, support.
Been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss, for the expense report for Nancy Banks, all those in favor?
Aye.
On our T.I., motion carries. We also have an expense report for the treasurer, so we'll discuss that now, if it's okay.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the expense report for the treasurer, Mr. Volberg, for expenses incurred by attendance at GFOA Conference in San Francisco, California, support.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss, for Mr. Volberg's expense report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're here for your annual update on the city's investment policy, as well as the annual update on the resolution of depositories. So, Mr. Volberg, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and fellow elected officials. Tonight present for your approval, an annual update for our city's investment policy. Our investment policy has been awarded top honors by National Association of Treasurers, and with the, with the help of the city council, Finance Committee, as well as members of the council, our performance has been the top quartile in the entire country for investment performance, so thank you very much. Tonight's changes are minor. There is one change, it's chromatical correction regarding the maturity limits of municipal securities. The second change is regarding the physical delivery of securities. Because nowadays, securities are electronically delivered, they're not physically delivered. That's the reason for the change.
Okay. Uh, anything else on that before I ask for a motion? Um, we're good? Mr. Chairman? All right. Mr. Ficassi.
I think Mr. Fraser has it.
You're the chair of the Finance Committee.
I'll move for the annual update, our resolution is submitted August twenty-sixth.
All right, and Mr. Fraser? Deal, Mr. Ford, correct?
I did, I think we did. Investment policy. I think we did investment policy.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve the update to the city's investment policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Who was one of his?
Our, our other item is the depositary resolutions, annual updated depositary resolution. There were one change of name, one of the banks that we work with, Telcom Credit Union, has changed its name to Vibe Credit Union, so the depositary resolution is noting that. There's also been a change, Morgan Teagan has been renamed Raymond James Morgan Teagan, as well as also another brokerage firm, KG Alpha Capital Markets have been added to the list.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion for that? No. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Support. Support by Mr. Fraser.
You have a cover.
Um, and so do I, so go ahead, sir.
Um, I think it would be helpful when we make these changes, if you highlight the changes, so that we can note, for instance, in the Telcom Credit Union change to Vibe Credit, you'd agree to it or not know what the change was?
Well, I've actually had it on the cover letter to the council.
That's okay. It's easy to, as you're stepping through to see it.
And also on the investment policy, we actually did redlining of the items changed.
So, any other questions? Because I have, I have one. Mr. Volberg, are we doing any business? You listed Lotus Bank here, and I recently read in Crane, sort of, I read a positive and a negative about this bank, although, although disturbing, but yet, um, they're doing extremely well, but perhaps some of the internal politics are not very correct. Are we doing any business with this bank, Lotus Bank?
We maintain one C.D. for, it's below a million dollars, so we, we have initiated a relationship with that bank when all the banks were below our investment grade. They were one of the few banks that didn't carry all the bad mortgages, because they were newer to the area, so they didn't have all the baggage that the other larger banks had. But that's why we had added them as, as a place to have diversification. But it's not one of our primary banks, do we do business with?
Okay, I'm just, I was just curious. All right.
Mr. President?
I'm, I'm.
Yes.
One of the things that I may have been discussing with Finance Committee, and I've heard this from numerous banks, when you say you have one C.D., our distribution of funds, it would help me if I knew the percentage of our investments in these financial institutions each one had. So, to me, it's important, if we have, here we have listed a number of banks, but if all the, the majority of the money is being put, or I've heard the banks, what money has been taken out, and we still have a small amount there. But the question is, you know, there's relationships and, and a number of money, and so it starts those conversations. So it would help me if I knew the percentage of each of these institutions, and when we're moving, or downsizing, or, or whatever, because we can have all of these and have one or two banks with the major amount. And to me, that's not the objective of having all of these different banks. And you may have an eligible reason for... And you may have other dealer reasons for, but I want to know that.
Sure. No, I mean, definitely, we want to support the banks that have locations in our area of the city. Hansbank opened up their headquarters in our city, so we initiated a CD with them to show our support for their bank as well. We don't do our primary business with them, but we definitely show a form of support by investing our money as CD with them, and being able to earn a good rate of return. It's not just as a charity situation, it's also for the good of the residents of the city of Southfield.
But, you know, for me, it doesn't mean to know if, you know, I'm sure you have a plan.
Sure.
I'm sure if every bank doesn't have the same amount, but what is the strategy, and where is the bottleneck?
Typically, we do a review with the council Finance Committee. The council Finance Committee reviews, we have two monitors that monitor everything that gets done in terms of investments. We have, we have the Cut Water Asset Management Group, as well as also Asset Strategies, Georgia Media, which monitors those things. And so, definitely, I have a report I can provide for you, and all the other elected officials, whoever would like to have that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We need to vote on this item, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Figure one, I think, aye. Motion carries. We have approved the update to the Depositor Resolution schedule. There's nothing ordinances, we have one enact, and Mr. Frazier, I'll turn to you. Yes, sir.
I move that we enact, excuse me, I move that we enact ordinance number sixteen fourteen, the wireless communication facilities ordinance.
All right. That's for, I have it supported by Ms. Jordan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We, oh, sorry, we have to go. It's a six-one vote in this bank, with Mr. Lance voting out. At this point, then, Ms. Ward guides me here. We follow a reset.
The adjournancy in the room, at which point, then, if council so chooses, there would be a motion to go into closed session?
Okay. So we are, our regular meeting is concluding. We are going to close session on negotiations. So at this point, we will take a five-minute reset, and we resume our meeting, and then council study. Thank you for attending.
Mr. President, I guess. Ms. Attorney, Attorney, Madam Attorney?
No.
Should we make that motion to go into closed session before we leave here?
Well, if we just transfer rooms, we can make it there. We're not concluding this meeting. We'll suddenly adjourn to that room, and then a motion can be made.
Okay, I was just, I was just trying to let the people that are watching know that our meeting is gonna go on, but...
But if I, if you want to make the here, there's no, there's no problem.
Not a big deal, so.
All right, we'll do it in the other room. All right, welcome again. Thank you very much.